Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of September 6th of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremner, would you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Bremner. Item number four, Agenda Changes. Are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson, second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Item number five, we have a couple of special presentations tonight. The first one is from some Zion Benton High School students. Chris Cubic, one of the, I call him the professor at Zion Benton High School, is here to make the case.
Thank you. Please make sure to note that promotion to professor in the official means. Mayor, council members, guests, I'm here on behalf of National Honor Society to present an idea for a project in conjunction with the Commission on Special Events. And I'll turn it over to the students who will help to lead it. And then if there are specific questions, I can come back and answer some of that. So I'll turn it over to the queen bee of the project, Sofia Villa-Lobos. Also with her is Manny Guirres.
So we are proposing for homecoming week for our homecoming day of the school to paint windows of downtown Zion to show like ZB pride and spirit for homecoming week. And this is my colleague, Madison Guirres.
And that is, that is what you'd like to do? I, I'll speak if, if I might. That's a great idea. I can recall being in high school many, 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 many years ago and having the ZB spirit present throughout the city. It was absolutely terrific. So I, I know with the council members, if it's something that we have to take to vote, or we will work with you and the Honor Society to talk, talk to the businesses, if you haven't already done that about promoting this, because I think it's a great thing for our community. And one of the things that been evident in our, in our community for so many years is the fact that our high school teams and our high schools activities groups have really brought our, our city together. And coming out of COVID for a couple of years where everybody's been shut in, this is a great way to kind of celebrate coming out of COVID, and it's a great project that you're working on, so. Mayor, do you remember the huge bonfires we used to have for homecoming week? Oh, my goodness. Those were great, right out in the middle of the field on 23rd Street by the New Tech High School. Those were- You got a bonfire on the agenda? You can talk to the fire chief over there. Something we allow these days. Those were all moments we looked forward to as, as, as high school students. It was part of our growing up and our bonding as, as a community and as students, so I know this is a project that we're gonna support and help you with.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for all that you do in the community too at the National Honor Society. All right. Anyone have any questions for Professor Cubic other than the bonfire? Will there be a, a list of activities for that, that, the weekend, the homecoming activities?
Yes, and we can provide that. And then a part of the student's job will be to put together a Google form on which businesses can indicate, I like my business window painted, here's my location, any stipulations or requests or anything. We'll use a similar Google form to recruit donors to donate the supplies and also some volunteers, not just students but members of the community, to paint and then to help clean up. So we're really hoping this will be a bridge between the school and the community and we can restore that old tradition. Homecoming itself is the first Friday in October, I believe it's the 5th, so homecoming week is the week before then. So ideally, we would have this done the week before that, which is the final Saturday in September. So hopefully, we'll have everything ready to go, so when homecoming week kicks off, we have the windows done. If we need to paint then during homecoming week, culminating in the homecoming celebration and possible fire on Friday, the, the 5th, then we'll do that, but we hope to have it ready to go before then. We will be in touch with more details, we'll work with some leader and the Special Events Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you for your support.
There's a young lady that had a question being-
Yes, I did. I don't know if it's me, or if your mic is off, or just that Ms. Villa-Lobos has such a small voice. I couldn't hear what she was saying. I don't know what she was asking.
Okay.
If I could have that.
So it was, they're, they're trying to work with the city and getting the businesses downtown to be able to paint their windows for homecoming week with a show of ZB pride, something, signs that they have all over the school, and the signs that we have throughout our community to promote the, the beauty and the great things about our community.
I also remember those days too. Both my girls went through Zion Benton. All four, all four of my grandchildren have gone through Zion Benton, so I'm, I'm sorry that they missed all those great days.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Friday is the 7th?
October 7th.
Thank you.
October 7th.
All right. She corrects me too.
I just didn't want to pull out my phone to look.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Great to see you as always, and thank you. Our, our second presentation, at our last city council meeting, we had a proclamation read about our world champion, Razzle Dazzle, and they are here tonight with their parents, or their coaches, Laura Spade, Don Schmell, and Christie Kerner couldn't be here tonight because her daughter wasn't feeling well, but we wanted to, first of all, be able to congratulate you in, in person, thank the parents for your support of your children. And what they did, the hard work they showed, the team spirit, is really something that is the ethos of the city of Zion, where we have a tremendous amount of teamwork going in, in our community, positive things. It starts with the parents, and it starts at home, so thank you, parents, for supporting your children and their dreams. And to the Razzle Dazzles, thank you for bringing the world championship back here and for all of your hard work, your dedication to what you're doing at being the very best. And we know, as you continue, we'll continue to expect great things out of you. And we wanted this opportunity for our, our citizens that come here to see you, but also for our, our city council members and the mayor to be able to take pictures with you. So if you'd come up now, is Gibby here tonight or somebody? No, Gibby's not here, so we'll have to have someone take a nice photo of us together. Laura Spade is the coach. We'll give that out to you. A big round of applause for our world champion. As these young ladies take their spots in the back, Coach Bates is gonna have a couple of words for us. Thank you. Thank you, great gentleman.
Would you like to present Mayor McKinnon his own world championship shirt?
Do they teach you a routine to go with that? I'm working on that. Oh, next year.
Lessons start in October.
Lessons start in October.
Okay. Let's start with the beginner class.
Yes, pre, pre-b beginner class.
Eight-thirty Saturday morning.
All right.
I'll call you when it gets close. I do want to say thank you, the city of Zion has so supported to us. We had a couple of girls and a mom go downtown and just ask different businesses if they'd be willing to donate, and I'm telling you, businesses in the area that have no connection, no none of the girls, really came through for us. So we appreciate the support from the city of Zion, and we are proud to be a part of the city of Zion, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number six, Citizen Comments.
Did you wanna, oh, I was gonna say, do you wanna take a minute? If anyone wants to leave, they can.
Oh.
Because, just because of noise, it becomes difficult.
Sure. Since we're conducting the rest of our city council meeting, if you don't want to stay, you don't have to.
We're having to practice.
All right. They say, perfect practice makes perfect.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Thank you.
People leaving, the noise gets tough.
First person is Lashandra Barnes.
Good evening. My name's Lashandra Barnes. Pleasure to finally meet you. So as I mentioned in my previous comment, I've had a lot of issues in my rental home that I've been renting for about 10 months now, mainly with the safety and being hazardous and unsanitary. I'm very displeased with the conditions of the home. I have three small children as well and what we've been, you know, subjected to since living there. So, and I, I feel like the reason that we experienced this is because of poor city and housing authority inspections. The rental house inspection program needs drastic improvements or many of our families will suffer as mine has. I was told that the inspections are purely visual, but that to me just isn't good enough. And it's interesting that the housing authority told me the exact same thing. So everyone's just doing a, a visual walkthrough, how are we catching the sanitation, the hazards and things that we actually have to go and look at? So I wasn't really understanding that part, but I was told on both ends, by the city as well as by the housing authority, we're just doing visual general, you know, inspections. And that to me is, is just not good enough. Mayor McKinnon has expressed to me that I am, and I quote, "the only tenant from which they have received a complaint about the rental house inspection program since inception", in both. But regardless if I am the only one to complain or one of 100, my complaints are so valid and they should be taken seriously, I feel, and I feel like my suggestions should be considered most definitely. I had a few questions in my last comment that have not been addressed, so I'll reiterate them here. What changes will be made to your inspection process to kind of, you know, create stricter guidelines on your inspectors to ensure that there is the quality of inspections as well, as well as the consistency, and then the proper documentation and transparency of all parties involved? How will you measure the effectiveness of these changes and these improvements once they're implemented? All renters in the city deserve to know the answers to these questions, and it's very important to me because I've literally suffered so much since I moved into this home, and it shouldn't even have passed the city's inspection, let alone the housing authority. So it's like, it passed both and it shouldn't have even gotten to me to that point, in my opinion. So you've been made aware of these issues, and my question is just, what are you gonna do about it? I'd like to say to the citizens of Zion, it's important to know your legal rights. Now, I am not an attorney, but if you are renting and living in hazardous, unhealthy, unsafe conditions, don't be afraid to speak up and raise your concerns to your landlord. If you are unwilling, or if they are unwilling to help you further escalate the issue, seek legal counsel if needed, and raise complaints with the city inspectors and the housing authority and HUD if you're under their program. We cannot afford to be silent. One voice can truly save the lives of many others and change the lives of many others. Thank you so much for your time, and I will continue to patiently await your response to all the questions that I've asked. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Clyde McLemore.
First of all, I don't know if y'all heard about the situation in Jackson, Mississippi. Well, I'm inviting y'all to be with Black Lives Matter and FOCUS, assist us in, for Jackson, Mississippi, a water supply donation like we did for Flint, Michigan, and we was pretty good at it, what we did here in Zion, to get water over to Flint, Michigan. The situation is worsening in Jackson, Mississippi. I'm leaving on September, September to take at least a truckload of water down here for the people they really need. As a voting citizen of the city and a leader in the community, I have a right to speak about the conditions of my city. The way this city government is ran is not susceptible to the city, to the citizens at the city. You, Mayor, was elected mainly because you were black and a home guy, hometown guy. Those two things, if they were properly leveraged, would have helped for you, be helpful for you and the city. However, since you've been mayor, you have done basically nothing to support or uplift black people, and most of your decision-making either hurt us or excluded us. As for being a product of Zion, we have not benefited from that because you're disconnected or, and disengaged from the city and the residents who need you most. Our black and brown kids need to be encouraged by you, the school district, and you ignoring them. You need to contact with the young shooters and the murderers in the city and let them know there's a better way. You are not connected nor concerned with them, the activists nor people of color in the, in the community. So why did we elect you? And what value do you bring to the city? Your governing is not acceptable. Yeah, you show up for a photo out. How does a photo out benefit the citizens of Zion? Last council meeting, you said that I'm out here breaking laws. Show, that shows me how disconnected you are, because if I was breaking laws, they would lock my black ass up. However, I will go into gutter and get our youth. We do mentorship classes for black and brown youth. We reach out for, for services for the elderly, for the elderly. During the pandemic, we fed over 1,500 families with 30-pound boxes of food. When our youth are dying out here, our youth are stealing cars just for a joyride. A good piece of advice would be for you to actually live in the city versus Chicago or your place in West Castle. They didn't elect you to serve the residents of Zion, did.
Thank you. Mary Lou Hildebrand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. In the month of August, your ESDA volunteers donated 146 and a half hours of service for a value to the city of $4,387. We assisted the police department with traffic at an accident scene and applied numerous barricades as requested for block parties. We performed the monthly siren test and assisted with traffic for a fire at State Line Road and Green Bay Road. We assisted at the food pantry at the leisure center and participated in the Honor Flight Detail escorting our veterans back from Milwaukee Airport. We assisted with traffic and crowd safety for Monarch Mania and also conducted our monthly team meeting as well as duty nights at the center to maintain our equipment. We are always ready to welcome volunteers to our team. If you are retired, this is a good way to fill some spare time and assist our city. We can be called out at any time, day or night, to assist the various city departments so your voluntary hours could fill in when convenient for you, and every donated hour is greatly appreciated. If interested, go to the city website and go out and application. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Mayor.
Stepping back from my role as the ESDA Director in town, I want to say to Mr. Mayor that I believe you're working hard and you care about our city as much as any mayor we've ever had.
Thank you, Mary Lou.
And you live with the city, or you live about three blocks from me.
Dia Barker, did I pronounce that correctly? Please help me out.
It's Dia Barker.
Dia, thank you.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and City Council members. I'd like to say may God's peace and blessings be upon you all. My name is Dia Barker, I'm one of the representatives from the Amadiya Muslim community. It is an honor to stand before you today on behalf of the Amadiya Muslim community of Zion and throughout our country. The last time I stood here was September the 2nd, 2021, at the city's planning and zoning meeting, giving a humble testimony to the beauty fine of our place of worship that is now being constructed at 27th and Lewis Avenue. Today gives me great pleasure to acknowledge that our community has great gratitude to the city council and neighbors for their support and opportunity for us to construct this beautiful mosque in Zion. We would further greatly appreciate your kind consideration of our community's request for the key to our city to be given to His Holiness, Monsurah Amad. May God be His helper. His Holiness travels across our country and internationally and has written letters to country leaders advocating for global peace. He has spoken at the United States Capitol Hill and received official welcome resolutions. He received keys to cities of Philadelphia and Los Angeles. He is no stranger to the city of Zion because he visited us in the year 2018, inspiring our members and neighbors to be good citizens and live harmoniously with people of all faiths. The history, the founder of Zion in connection to the founder of the Amadiya Muslim community was one that exemplified prayer over prejudice, how two people worlds apart resolve their difference peacefully through prayer. This may have led to the Zion we now know as a city who welcomes diversity, embraces initiatives to establish civil peace and promote progress. Providing the keys of Zion to His Holiness, Monsurah Amad, may God's peace be upon him, would establish another grand milestone in the history of Zion. We hope that you will join us in our inauguration at this new Zion mosque, October the 1st on 27th and Lewis Avenue, and please consider our request for offering the keys of Zion to our Holiness, Monsurah Amad. Thank you.
Thank you. W.C. Bremner.
Mayor McKinnon, General Lee, Honorable Suresh, I rise to thank Director Roberts and his people. I was out of town last week, so I'm not real sure of the timeline, but someplace along the line, a tree branch came down in front of our house. My wife called Director Roberts, who has been gracious enough to give us his cell phone number. She reported the branch was down, and from what she told me, within about 15 minutes, a city truck came by, picked it up, took care of the situation. I do thank Director Roberts and all his people for the very prompt service that he gave to me and my wife, me in absentia, my wife as residents of Zion. Thank you, Director Roberts, and thank your people for us.
Thank you.
I thank you, Suresh and Lee, for your time and your attention. I request permission to stand down.
Permission granted. Abu Baker.
Can you cross the room?
Okay. Kathy Champagne.
Students, that you think this is about prayer next time. I would like to echo Mary Lou's comments. I think, Mr. Mayor, the councilmen, council ladies, women, that you are probably one of the best councils in the city of ZB. And just off the top of my head, you worked for the Strangling Act, helped us get, hopefully, grant money from the state of. You were, uh, helped implement the land bank. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Frierson, you were the two original members from that, which has helped take down some buildings and will take down some more. You worked with the state to get us road repairs, cleanup days, and I cannot speak to the school board, that's the president's job, but as a school board member, I appreciate it that you come to high school and work with the kids and talk to them. Okay, so I'm here about land acknowledgement. In Canada, New Zealand, and among the tribal nations of the U.S., it's common legal policy to open events by acknowledging the indigenous and the evidence of this land. Acknowledgement is a simple yet powerful way to show respect for cultures whose history has been deliberately erased. Despite this, Native Americans are often at the forefront of willingness to protect the earth. This acknowledgement is a first step towards honoring Native American communities and enabling de-equal colonialization and colonization. The original inhabitants of the land that we're holding this meeting on right now were the Sioux, Kickapoo, Hochuk, Miamiya, Peoria, and Potomac. This information is from the U.S. Department of Arts and Culture Guide, called Honor Native American Land, Honor Native Land. If you do this honoring, you have to need a, and coupled with a ceremonial prayer. So thank you for your attention.
All right. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Consent Agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on August 16th, 2022 at 7:05 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on August 16th, 2022 at 8:41.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries.
Bills, vouchers 141275 through 141481 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $2,245,194.70.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I will make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye. Motion carries. Item eight, considering passing resolution as follows. AA amending the personnel authorization per Administrator Nate.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Probably a couple, twice a year, we review our personnel authorization, which basically is the authorization that council has for us to hire staff throughout the departments of the city. Things change as far as operations, attrition through retirements, things of that nature. This is ultimately driven by budget that's approved, so there's positions that we may have in here that we actually don't fill based on budget, but based on operational planning, what we do is we come through and kind of clean this up. So you'll see a couple of administrative part-time positions that were made full-time, approved at prior meetings that we're cleaning up. Some staff change for the fire department, but what the big change is within the police department, you'll see that we have two lines added at the bottom. We have worked with the District 6, the elementary school district, hiring two school resource officers, SROs. This came out of a group meeting that all the administrative staff for the taxing bodies as well as Chief Street, Chief Barton, myself, and the mayor work on building those relationships. We have an intergovernmental agreement now with the school districts to provide school resource officers, officers in the school with proper training, specialized training, that they reimburse a large portion of that to us to work better with the students and intercooperatively with the police department. This adds those two positions to the personnel authorization. We also applied for a grant, it's a COPS grant, I don't remember what the acronym stands for, but basically to allow underserved communities to hire additional officers through grant funding. So we, we applied for five positions with that, which will be largely funded through the grant. We don't know whether we'll get awarded that grant yet. That's what we separated out as a grant-funded position. If we don't get awarded the grant, we don't fill those positions, but we want to make sure that as they go and review the grant process, that we're authorized to hire those individuals should they award it. So those are the changes to the personnel authorization, and I recommend approval as presented.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. David, you-
David, you're striking two part-time administrative secretaries, one from finance and one from fire rescue. Is that funding, although I take it, number one, those are empty positions right now?
Yes. A while ago, we approved those positions going to full-time. We didn't know if the individuals that were, we didn't know if it was going to be approved as a full-time position, so we did want to eliminate the part-time positions and have those individuals be out of jobs by changing the personnel authorization before the full-time positions were created. So we kind of had to have them both on the authorization at the same time until that transition from part-time to full-time happened. And now we can go back and remove the part-time positions.
And I noticed one other change, dropping from 17 to 16 firefighter paramedics?
Yeah, that was, and that was just a, again, operational change. Now we have the four shifts, we have basically six. When you count the lieutenants and the battalion chiefs, we have six full-time on every shift, as well as we can fill with POPs for an additional seventh spot, which is per the contract.
Okay, all right, thank you. For the grant-funded positions, can you talk about how long that grant covers those positions and what would be our strategy going forward after the grant has lapsed?
You might be able to talk everyone, but I can't remember if it's a three or five year.
It's a, it's a four-year, four-year grant funding. First three years will be funded by the grant. There might be some follow-up obligations from the city on the last and final year. I think the intent is to be proactive during that time and see what steps that we can make, as well as the city and the local city during that time. So I would say it's to reevaluate at the end of that and determine what we're going to do if we would like to hold those positions or if we would like to let those fall off through attrition.
There are also provisions to reduce, to get waivers on or reductions of the city contribution to the match that we'll be pursuing as well.
Got it, thank you.
But that's, that's yet to be determined. We don't know, we won't know until early October is what we were told.
And the grant will have to ultimately come back to this council for approval if awarded.
Got it.
Any additional questions? We had a first and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye, motion carries. Item nine, consider passing ordinance as follows. A. Authorizing and approving a letter of understanding between the state of Illinois and the city of Zion per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. IDOT is currently designing and planning a project to replace the old Hoover Colbert under Illinois 130 South in Sheridan Road. The state has notified the city that the existing drainage water main will be required to relocate. Additionally, during the construction of the Colbert temporary water main will be installed in order to provide continuous water service for over 700 customers. The attached letter of understanding describes the responsibility of the state and the city of Zion. The state has agreed to fully fund the cost of relocation and installation of the temporary water main. The city of Zion will continue to own, operate, and maintain the new water main. Staff requests and recommends approval of Illinois Department of Commerce and City of Illinois letter of understanding.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for authorizing and approving this letter of understanding.
Motion by McDowell?
I'll second.
Second by Fisher, questions or comments?
I just had one question. I mean, I guess ultimately it won't hit our pockets as the city, but the difference in the proposed estimate of 250 versus the final, can you speak to the, to the difference?
A lot of that was an initial estimate two years ago. We were also looking at a different methodology of the temporary water main. During the design phase, dealing with IDOT, IDOT requested we actually bore 55 feet deep and then 55 feet back up. The Colbert itself is set at 45 feet. So that alone has increased the cost of 230 feet, maybe 100,000.
Got it, thank you.
All right, we had a first and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number nine B, approving and authorizing a certain memorandum of understanding between the city of Zion on behalf of the Zion Police Department and the city of Waukegan and the county of Lake per Chief Barton.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This is just an annual renewal of the MOU. I respectfully request the city council approve this memorandum of understanding between the city of Waukegan, the county of Lake, and the city of Zion regarding the 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG. This grant is awarded annually by the U.S. Department of Justice. The city of Waukegan completes the application, they're the holder of it, for the grant on behalf of the Zion parties, and funds are distributed to the parties through the city of Waukegan. The MOU is necessary for the city of Waukegan to act as the fiscal agent for this grant. The city of Zion has been awarded the grant in the amount of $11,642. Of that, $2,000 will be forwarded to the Lake County State Attorney's Office, which we've done in years past. The police department has used this grant in the past to pay for equipment, install on squad cars, speed trailers. We are currently considering the purchase of updated equipment in the training room, ballistic shields, riot munitions and gear, along with other things that we would use for enforcement action.
All right, is there a motion to approve the authorizing this memorandum of understanding?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Holmes, questions or comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number nine C, approving and authorizing a redevelopment agreement between the city of Zion and Roger Whitmore's Automotive Services per Administrator Nate.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Roger's towing, or Roger Whitmore's Automotive Services applied for a TIF grant. At the last TIF meeting, the TIF commission approved the application as requested. Basically, what this is for is the Illinois EPA came in and said he needed to be removed off of his well for, for water quality purposes. He was required to run a line for, and tap into city water off of Kenosha Road. Additionally, while he currently has unpaid surfaces where there's vehicle storage, car traffic, things like that, he's always wanted to do paving of his entire area around his business, again, for seepage of potential oil, gas, things of that nature, into groundwater quality. So he combined those together into a request to the city in the TIF district. They approved an amount of $174,000 for all of the work necessary to do both those projects. There's additional improvements he's going to be doing to, to his building, painting, things like that, but that's not eligible. You'll see, you may have seen the quotes in there for that stuff, but those are not eligible TIF expenses, nor are they included in this total. The TIF for approved 174,000 and change, I can't remember the exact amount. Subsequent to that, however, the quote on the asphalt was old. He went back to the contractor and they said, well, we can't give that same quote anymore. As we've seen in our own projects, the price of asphalt has gone up significantly. They gave a revised quote that was $6,200 more. And that's, that amount brings it up to $180,767. And that's what's integrated in the redevelopment agreement for the improvements in that area to connect into the city water and pave and approve that property. So I would recommend approval of redevelopment agreement out of TIF number seven. Using, this was all coming out of TIF funds, so it doesn't have an impact on city budget in the amount of $180,767.
Is there a motion to approve the authority of the redevelopment agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell, questions or comments?
Question on the age of TIF sevens, that's relatively recent, right?
It's only a couple of years old. Been 21 years on top.
Is there funding in it to support this request, or how would that be?
There is, there is permanent.
Were there any objections from any members of the TIF board?
No, no, they also, they asked questions about the details of it all and everything, and what was eligible, what wasn't, but there were no objections.
All right, any additional questions? We had a first and a second. Our clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Nay.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye, motion carries. Item nine D is authorizing the conveyance of certain real property within the city of Zion per Director Ions.
May your honor, this is the ordinance for the sale of real estate in the District of Wisconsin, 84, 29, 19, 31st Street and 031st Street. This is the ordinance for approving the sale.
Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by McDowell, questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye, motion carries. Item 10, discussion authorization and approval. A tabulation of bids, 2022 CDVG sidewalk program per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. A bid opening was held on August 2nd, 2022 for the 2022 CDVG sidewalk program. The following bids were received. Schroder and Schroder Inc., $276,100. Alliance Contractors, $347,000. The Lake County CDVG in G, Grover, requires a minimum of three bidders. Staff has requested Lake County to waive this requirement attached to the approval from Lake County. Schroder and Schroder Inc. was the lowest bidder. However, the bid was significantly higher than the approved budget for this project. Staff has requested Schroder and Schroder Inc. approval of the project quantities to be reduced and the proposed unit bid prices stay the same. Attached is the approval of bid sheet reflecting Schroder and Schroder Inc.'s unit bid prices along with the adjusted quantity. Staff requests and recommends awarding this project to the lowest responsible bidder, Schroder and Schroder Inc. from St. Louis, Illinois in the amount of $190,730. The project is funded through the Street and Bridge Fund for $30,730 and $160,000 for Community Loan and Loan Grant Fund. Copies of the bid tabs are on file with the city courts office, public works office, and posted on the city website.
Yeah, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of the CDVG sidewalk program.
Motion by McDowell?
I'll second.
Second by Fisher, any questions or comments?
Question for record. So which areas are we going to focus on with the sidewalk improvements for this project?
We're actually all over. There's quite a few, I'm curious if it's all over, it's, we're out in the center of town.
Okay, I got a question from a resident about the sidewalk on Sheridan near the sledding hill. Apparently, there's part of it that's, that's broken up.
I believe that is on the list.
Okay, yeah. I think he was, I think he was concerned, I think he's handicapped and it's hard for him to get down that sidewalk.
I believe he's contacted our engineering department before on that one, that's why I was on here.
Okay, thank you.
Director Roberts, if I'm right, the $160,000 was kind of a two-year combination of the program from the county?
Yes, this probably actually, because of the way the bids have been the last few years. We received, the first year we did this bid, we received zero bids. Lake County contacted us back, we had already applied for the following year, CDVG. They suggested demining the two projects, make a larger project, and rebid it out. This is actually the third bid that we put out there for the sidewalk project.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
So I have a question. So some of the, some of the sidewalks that I've seen, there's a gap between the existing and what's being added. Is that part of this, or is it part of something else that's being done?
I'm not sure what you're meaning by gap.
On Galilee and in front of where the old bus station is, that sidewalk, that corner there, the sidewalk, concrete was poured. But the existing sidewalk, there's a gap of four feet or so, and it's actually dirt. So I don't know, why wouldn't?
So a lot of the sidewalks, what is it? I'm trying to remember where that's at, that's adjacent to an empty lot, am I correct?
Is that 28th?
So it's an empty lot?
Twenty, twenty.
28th and Galilee?
It is.
Where we have the recycling day.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's a empty lot there, we usually leave those gaps for whoever builds, that's a requirement to complete that sidewalk. Because we have so much sidewalk in the city that needs repair, and we have not enough money to even cover what we have right now. We have to try and use stuff like that and require. However, if we do go into a block, a lot of times we'll take a look at that. So if we're doing most of that block in that area, repairing that, we'll finish those. And most of that, this really kind of depends on money. We decipher, because we try and spur that out as much as we can.
So kind of similar to that, as Zion changes and new residents come in, around the city you'll find where you go down a block and there are sidewalks, and then abruptly it cuts off. So if a resident is interested in having that paved and having a sidewalk put in, is that ever something that's eligible in small amounts?
If we're doing that block, it is, under the repair. If they call our engineering department, make them aware of that address.
Okay.
If he's on that, estimating out how many he needs on that block, we usually try and finish those off.
Okay.
Depends on the money.
Right, okay, but they would just need to call engineer.
Because I was going to add up pretty quick, right now I think it's running 275, 300 blocks a square, 15 by 5 foot square sidewalk.
Okay.
What the cost is.
How much?
275, 300 blocks.
Oh, okay.
For 15 by 5 foot, 2,000 square feet.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? We had a first and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnney?
Aye, motion carries. Item number 10B, tabulation of bids, sanitary sewer inspection camera per Director Roberts.
Thank you, again, sir. A bid opening was held on July 5th, 2022 for the purchase of a mainline sanitary sewer inspection camera. The following bids were received. Standard Equipment Company, used equipment bid, which is a demo camera, A new equipment bid, $112,309.71. EJ Equipment, a used bid, or used equipment bid, $127,684.72. Some new equipment bid of $163,958.81. After demonstrations of both proposed camera systems, staff requests and recommends awarding the purchase of the mainline sanitary sewer camera system from Standard Equipment Company in the amount of $112,309.71. Funding for this equipment purchase is a budgeted item within the water fund. Copies of the bid tabs are on file in the city courts office, public works office, and posted on the city website.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Fisher, any questions or comments?
Yes.
What was the thinking of going with the new equipment as opposed to the used?
Well, I didn't feel there was that big of a spread between the 89 and the 112. And it's a lot better, the 112 camera is an HD, the demo camera was not. Hope to clear the picture.
Thanks. And, and so explain to us how that camera works for us that don't know about cameras in the sewer systems, do they help identify issues within the, in the system?
So we know we have a collapsed pile of back, or like a block of houses are backing up, and we suspect a collapsed sanitary pile. You remember, most of these sanitaries are 15 to 23 deep. So we can send the camera down, we can take a look instead of digging in multiple holes to find where that blockage is at. The camera- The camera, we can spot it exactly. Uh, and then also, having the newer camera, we can go and start a inspection process, checking, uh, monthly, different lines throughout the city, in terms of finding if there's going to be roots in the lines, uh, maybe the cracks in, in the pile, it could potentially be a, a collapse prevention.
Um, I actually got to see the current camera system in operation a couple of years ago.
Twenty-three years old.
Yeah, I was going to ask how old it was.
It's twenty-three years old, we've been living it along.
And, and currently, there's, there's, it can't, it can't be, the, I think the software and everything is, is, you can't replace, you can't replace it. So, uh, we're way overdue to get a new system as it is.
Ray, you missed your cue when he said twenty-three years old, you were supposed to say the age of the mayor.
Did he hear that?
Didn't cross your mind? Figured it would.
Maybe time's up.
Yeah.
I was going to say, don't fall for the trap.
Any other questions? Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye, motion carries. Item ten C, consider zoning docket twenty-two dash Z dash fourteen, an ordinance requesting a zoning change for thirty-nine oh five Illinois Route one-seventy-three per Director Iansson. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, your honor. Thirty-nine oh five Route one-seventy-three currently has three parcels, two of which are zone light manufacturing, one is zone highway business. Real bills request a zoning change for the north parcel, pin number zero-four, one-eight, four-zero-zero, zero-three-five, from highway business to light manufacturing, keep consistent with the other parcels and the use. At September first, twenty-two, planning zoning commission meeting, direct me to approve the zoning change request.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Holmes, second by Fisher. Questions or comments?
Um, question, did you say this was a northmost lot? Is this the outlot that will remain within, with the city?
Uh, I didn't follow that.
Is this the outlot that the city will retain?
Uh, no.
So currently, there's, so the three strips run north, north to south. This is the one that runs, the northernmost one. There is ultimately, they're the owner, they're the ones petitioning, but it's, it's going to be split in half, that one.
Okay.
So they're, they're going to retain kind of the western chunk of those three parcels.
Okay.
We'll have the eastern six or seven acres, um, once we end up doing a kind of subdivision after they close the whole process.
Okay. Where I was, where I was going with it was, will light manufacturing impact the proposed suitor of the property?
Well, it might have to be rezoned at that time depending on what the use is going to be.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Having to do this now as a single parcel, we can't split it out. But once, once we close on that, if we get a developer that's interested, that needs highway business for that, basically what the city of Zion would do is petition ourselves, the planning and zoning, or the developer petition to rezone the highway business.
Got it, thank you.
And, and this is the property that is across from Walmart, that's been vacant for how many years?
Oh boy.
At least fifteen.
About fifteen years now, we have a, uh, major business ru- uh, locating into that business now?
Correct, they're relocating from Gurnee to their headquarters, Zion.
Big deal.
Yep. Okay, uh, we had a motion and a second, any other questions? Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye, motion carries. Item number eleven, departmental commentary, uh, Director Iansson.
Thank you, your honor. I was just going to make a statement tonight, we did some more requests about how to upgrade electronics. I mean, return everybody to the Swalco website or phone number, if they want to call, they have drop, or dropout sites in Lake County. Close this one to be raised late to us. Or they can call waste management for a special pickup, that will be if he involved, and they may have to discuss the fee, having to pick up the end of this. So, just want to take that.
Okay, thank you. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. And an update on several projects we have going on throughout the city. Uh, the water main project, of course, I'd say that'd be the last time. The water main is completely online, uh, and servicing our customers. They have started the excavation of the alleys for reconstruction of that. Um, and they see, uh, a couple of trucks in there, you know, with a bunch of steam coming out. Those are lining, um, they're doing a liner within the sanitary and rewinding those pipes. Uh, that will be complete hopefully by next week, and then they can start looking at asphalt in, uh, those asphalt alleys. Jopon alleys are in the same situation, the same company is lining sanitaries on those three alleys, uh, and the contractor has been excavating, uh, prepping for the new asphalt. Twenty-seventh Street, concrete's all complete. Contractor told me today, they are looking at milling it tomorrow or Thursday. That will probably, uh, put asphalt going, new asphalt going down, uh, Friday or Saturday. As always, uh, as you can see, the city, there are a lot of projects out there, there's a lot of, a lot of people on the streets around, uh, wandering around, working. Please be, pay attention and be careful.
All right, thank you, Director Roberts. Chief Streed?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Like, the only thing I have for you tonight, it's kind of a happy, um, news or announcement that after a three-year hiatus, we're going to have our open house back. Um, kind of coinciding with fire prevention week at the beginning of October, it'll be Saturday, October eighth. Uh, from night to noon, we'll, we'll be posting flyers here within the next week or so when they're done. So I hope you come out and join us, and we hope we get a good turnout from our community after being pretty, pretty shut down for a few years now, so.
That's always been a big event.
Yes.
Uh, the open houses, that the, I can remember the last one going to the last one, and there were a lot of families there, uh, interested in what happens at the fire department. And I know you've been doing an excellent job of going into the schools and trying to recruit and get diversity into, uh, our fire department, so thank you for your efforts. Chief Barton?
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Um, to echo some of what Director Roberts said, I was driving around today and a few other days. Some of these, these construction sites, uh, are around our schools, so I, just today going down Twenty-seventh Street, I saw a number of kids running out into the road, not paying attention to cars, and even though there, there was nothing there to stop them. Uh, we've been putting squad cars out on Twenty-seventh Street and over by Shiloh and Central Little Schools at, at least, but please to, to drive or slow down, uh, please obey those, those, uh, uh, school zone speed limits, because those kids are just darting out there, they're not looking or paying attention, I hate to see somebody hit.
Thank you, chief. Administrator Nable?
I just have one item, it's more of a general comment, but, um, as we're all more attached to our phones and devices, um, that we've got kind of in the habit of having just perpetually in our hands, um, I just want to mention to everyone that if you have questions about city operations, city business, what's going on, uh, what's happening, we're all here. You, you know us, we're here, we have our emails, we have our phone calls, as Mr. Brenner said, contact Director Roberts. Um, a lot of people do have information, they tend, they get information of what's going on, but, and they share on Facebook comments, but a lot of people think they have the information, and they equally share on Facebook comments, and that creates a lot of confusion, a lot of time and effort for staff to diffuse rumors from the truth if they had just contacted the city directly. So if you have questions, even if it's on Facebook, send in, send a message directly on the city administrator, the city of Zion government Facebook site. Uh, we check those messages, we don't always monitor these other groups and where this, this information's out there. We'll catch it now and then and see incorrect information shared out, but, like I said, the intentions aren't necessarily malicious. They think that's what's happening, but it's not always the case. So, we're here to answer questions, please go directly to the source with any questions about operations, why we do what we do, what's going on, what's being built, what's happening. We're here to help you out and answer those questions.
Absolutely. A lot of that, that information is also on the city of Zion website. For those that have internet, can go to the department and get an idea of when we start the leaf, uh, program, uh, when there's issues, uh, or events at the fire department. All that information is on our Facebook pages, and all of our commissioners, as well as I am available by phone or email. So, good point there, Administrator Nable. Do any of our commissioners have any departmental comments?
Just one comment, Mayor, just want to thank you and all the commissioners that attended the mayor's prayer breakfast yesterday. I think it was a great event, and thank you for your involvement and support. And, um, next year, that event will be followed by a parade, is that right, Mayor?
Absolutely. Yeah, it'll be the fifty-third year of the mayor's prayer breakfast, which I appreciate the information you gave us on that uh, being started by Mayor Dunbar back in nineteen sixty-nine. So it's a, a great event, a great turnout yesterday from, from a lot of people. And the food was good, and it gave us all an opportunity to talk with the residents in our town, uh, about a lot of things. Uh, Commissioner Frierson?
Uh, yep. Uh, I'll add to the mayor, so in terms of contact, uh, I'm also a texter. Uh, that's a good way to get in touch with me throughout the day. Um, like I said, we're all here trying to do our best, and there are things sometimes that we miss, and the easiest way to get things done is probably not accusing somebody outright about what they're not doing, uh, but to listen with some empathy and, and talk and understand and actually create a dialogue. One of the things that I've found is public discourse seems to be going further and further down. Um, but when I talk to people one-on-one or in smaller settings, they really do have a heart and want to help. Um, but people also have emotions, people also have ego and things that get in the way. Um, and again, so as we sit here in these positions, like, we, I'll speak for myself. Um, I am here to help, I'm here to be of assistance and aid people where I can, um, and help facilitate and guide people through the process, which I know sometimes doesn't seem very intuitive. Uh, it can almost, you know, seem nonsensical in terms of how and why things are done sometime, but as Administrator Nable mentioned, uh, there are rules in place, right? And there's a process that we follow. Uh, sometimes, you know, we get into a process and realize, you know what? It's not good that we do it this way, and then we'll actually change the process. But unfortunately, even that is a process, right? So it's, you know, time, empathy, talking to people. Um, and, you know, some of the grandstanding and stuff like that, I mean, I get it politically, uh, but in terms of effectiveness and actually getting things done, um, look at the website, you know, approach us after council meeting, you know, grab a card, give a phone call, grab a coffee, uh, and again, we're here to help. Uh, as Mr. Brenner mentioned, I mean, the service that, uh, the staff within the, uh, city provides, it's, it's top-notch. I mean, I've gone to other cities, I've talked to people in, you know, other neighborhoods, and the responsiveness and the level of service that we get here, it, it goes a long way on the budget that we have. Um, not that we can't do better, uh, again, we're always striving and trying to do better and figure out ways to be more efficient with the resources that we have. So, um, you know, as you're dealing with your own challenges and, and things that pop up, just keep that in mind. Um, everyone's struggling with something and, you know, fighting through and trying to be the best that they can. Uh, so take that empathy to account when, when you're approaching people, and, um, I believe that that'll get you much further.
Thank you, Commissioner Frierson. Uh, Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, just a brief note, uh, just a, a piece of information. Um, I attended the, the Swalco, um, executive board meeting, um, a week ago, or last week, and one of the interesting things that came out of it is, is that it seems that more people are throwing things away. Um, our, our, and I'll ask, uh, Mr. Nable if he can recall, how much did we get for, for one quarter for our tipping fees for the landfill?
Nine-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand.
Which is considerably more than we normally get.
That was about double from a nor- that same quarter and prior, the prior two, three years.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to bring that up, because it kind of underlines, um, the importance of the, the landfill to our, our current finances. We get, um, a tipping fee for so many, so much per ton, uh, that's deposited at the landfill, and that is a major support to our budget. Without that, we would definitely be in serious trouble. So just a little piece of information for anyone out there. So, um, you know, uh, it might be pandemic-related, nobody's quite sure, but it does seem that collections are up, not just for Zion, but across the county. And, uh, the other thing that I would encourage is that if you're not recycling, please recycle. So, uh, we have that available to everyone, so. Just a little information.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
So I wanted to, um, um, also say that, uh, I've said it before, it, our city, uh, employees, uh, they, uh, from the police officers to the directors, you know, they, they do the jobs, uh, that they do, uh, to the best of their ability. These are thankless things that we, that we do for the city, uh, in addition to, uh, the members on, on this board. I'm not suggesting that I am, uh, here to be thanked, but we do the jobs to the best of our ability. I had an opportunity to, um, go on, uh, an inspection, I didn't enter, but on an inspection with Ms., uh, at Ms. Barnes' place, and, and ma'am, we will, we will be, uh, concluding your, your, your complaints, uh, to the best of our ability, absolutely. And I will ensure that we do that. Thank you.
Uh, my, my comments, uh, Ms. Barnes, I would like to address your comments. My, my response to you was not one of defense, being defensive, but, uh, letting you know just some, just some facts about the program. And we, I thank you for your, your comments and letting us know, and I put you in touch with the people that handle that on a daily basis, which are inspections. So anytime we get a complaint from our residents, we do take it seriously. Uh, I had a call a week ago last Friday, a frantic call from a woman that claimed she had raccoons and mice in her walls, and her conditions at her home weren't up, and it, it bothered me. I live here, I live two blocks from you, I'm thirty-first and Gillian, so I pass your home every day as I'm coming to city council meetings or city hall. And immediately, I got on the phone with our building department, and they sent someone out there that day to check her issues out. As far as phone calls from our department heads, most of the times when they get phone calls during the day, they are out in the field either with inspections or Director Roberts out on the streets. Chief Streed and the chief, everyone is, is working, but we respond to those calls as quickly as possible. From my seat, I get a lot of those calls every day from residents that have concerns. And since the pandemic, uh, my work phone, my hardline phone, has been tied to my cellphone. So when I get calls, I'm able to respond to those calls that day usually, if I'm not in meetings or don't have other calls. So we do take those seriously, and we understand that we can improve. And that's what we're trying to do with our city, we're not perfect, uh, but we do listen to your complaints and your issues. We do take them seriously, and we will work with you to resolve them as, uh, you've met with our building, uh, department director, Director Iansson, and I'm sure he's assured you the things that we're, the steps we're taking to address your concern. So thank you for bringing that to, uh, our attention. So, that's about really all I'd had for department, uh, departmental commentary, other than, I, I speak to our department heads just about every day. If I don't, if I don't call them on the phone, I see them here at city hall or out in the streets. And again, I'll, I'll tell you that during my four years as mayor, I just appreciate the attention to detail that you have in dealing with our residents, the patience you have, the professionalism you show. And there's not, there's a lot of times we don't get that same courtesy back when residents are calling us about an issue. We are there to help the residents. There are things that we have to identify that the city is responsible for, uh, the school's responsible for, but we have something called a Zion Leaders Group, that all of the taxing bodies, the heads of the taxing bodies get together, and we talk about all the issues that were there in our community, the kids, the issues with violence in our community, our township. And when there's issues where our residents need help, we've been promoting this for the last two years, for people that have mental health issues, if they have rent control issues, if they have been evicted from their apartment. There's a number you can call, two-one-one. That service with the United Way, I sit on that board. And we get more calls from Zion. And we get more calls from Zion, that two-one-one number, than any city in Lake County. So they are addressing the needs of our citizens. When I hear there aren't resources available, they are. We had that literature in city hall, we passed it out in businesses. Our police and fire department gives that out when they go on calls throughout the city. So the resources are there if people want the help. We can put the information out, but ultimately, at some point, people have to take the action, be able to address their issues. Again, I thank you, as I thank all of our residents when they call me, about any issues they have because it's a great way for us to be able to improve our city and look at our operations and talk about how we can do things better. Item number twelve is announcements on September twentieth at six P.M. We have a Zion Township Board meeting. And for those that don't understand, and one of our biggest challenges is educating some of our residents, what's the responsibility of the city? What's the responsibility of the park district? What's the responsibility of the township and the school? We're all separate entities, but we work together to solve the issues with our problems. So our Zion Township Board meeting, which is lightly attended in most cases, but they are the entity that provides a lot of the resources for our residents. After I had this call with this woman that claimed that she had raccoons in her house and that was not the case, there were no rodents, I came back and asked our attorney, our building department, how do we deal with, and I have this question for our chief of police, how do we deal with residents that have mental illness issues? And we have a lot. Where do we, how can we legally direct them or direct someone to them that can help them? Because we realize this woman is a frequent caller. And we spend the resources to go over there to make sure she's okay with wellness checks, but how do we give her the help that she needs? The township, I called the township and they have made a wellness check on that person and are trying to help them. So we are connected in that way. So September twentieth at six o'clock, our Zion Township Board meeting is, it will be on, and then at seven o'clock, our Zion City Council meeting. Also, Ms. Barnes, in September, we will get back to having, prior to your arrival here, we have landlord and tenant meetings in which we are able to have some of the top landlords that take care of their properties to be able to talk with the residents about what their rights are, what they can do when they have a landlord that doesn't help them. We suspended those due to COVID, but we're gonna bring those back out. So we're gonna have separate meetings for our tenants that are rental homes or rental apartments and then the landlords. And at some point, our intent is to bring them together so that we can cut down any of the friction or misunderstanding about how a building or a unit is kept. So at seven o'clock, we have a Zion City Council meeting on the twentieth and then getting into October fourth, we will have at seven P.M. a Zion City Council meeting. Item number thirteen is closed session pursuant to five ILCS one twenty-two, the open meetings for the discussion of filed pending probable or imminent litigation, collective bargaining, purchase or sale of real estate, legal counsel and personnel. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Motion by Ferguson, second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye, we only have one item that's left to deal with after closed.